But we moved into this location because we hoped that we would have so many people come and participate in listening tonight. We have our public hearing that is coming up this following Monday that starts at 7:00, and we'll open up at that time the comments at the beginning of the meeting. So we welcome you to come back and give comments or send them in in writing, but we want to really utilize our time tonight for the purpose of this work session. And turning my attention to the commissioners, I will note that we do have a quorum present this evening as we start our meeting. I want to first thank you guys for working together to decide that this is an important issue for us to be taking on and discussing not only as a planning commission, but deciding if this is something as a town and as a community we want to further pursue in a more formalized manner. So, thank you guys for being here. The way that this evening will work is we are going to first hear from our panel whom I'll introduce to you all in a moment, and then we will have Lisa Gilloran present an overview of what's going on right now in the town with our housing conditions. And then we will move it to comments from our panel, and then really move to an interactive discussion between the planning commission and our panel members. So, ask questions, this is an opportunity to learn. I think we heard some great things from you guys as I introduced you to the panel about not wanting to reinvent the wheel. We realize we're 4.2 square miles of limited resources in terms of staff, so let's find out what opportunities are out there, what are the best practices, and how can we really optimize things here as we move into the future in the town. So, without further ado, I'm excited to introduce our panel this evening. I get the distinct pleasure of working with these folks in another role that I have in the county where I serve as the vice chair of the Redevelopment and Housing Authority. And so, I am very pleased to introduce our director, Tom Fleetwood. Tom has been with Housing and Community Development since 2005, and he joined as a strategic planner with the county at that point. And he was working at that time to develop the agency's housing blueprint, which is a document that we still use and the Board of Supervisors today use to help develop housing policy at the county level. He also served as the lead on the development of the county's workforce housing policy in 2007, and worked extensively on the county's five-year consolidated plan. In 2011, Tom's position was reclassified first as the associate director, and then as the division director for the Fairfax County Redevelopment and Housing Authority. In this role, he maintained his strategic planning responsibilities while also providing direct support to the FCRHA commissioners like me. Fleetwood also acted as lead staff to the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors Housing Committee and on the Fairfax County Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and played a key role in the preparation of the annual budget narratives. Lots of good stuff, Tom, thank you. We are also joined by Ms. Cynthia Bailey. Cynthia is the deputy county attorney for Fairfax County, and she has served the county, we love her as far right, since 1999, and has practiced law for 25 years now. Prior to that, she was in private practice, and as the deputy county attorney, she is the liaison to the Fairfax County Redevelopment and Housing Authority, essentially where her main client. She oversees legal support for all the public-private partnerships that go through the county, and any of those support affordable housing. So, thank you Cynthia. And finally, we're joined this evening by Shelley Murphy, and she is the president and CEO of Wesley Housing. She was a former senior executive with Verizon Communications, where she gained a ton of organizational experience and strategic business growth that she brought to Wesley Housing's award-winning affordable housing programs. She's strongly committed to improving the lives of individuals and families in the community, and she's a member of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee for Fairfax County, the Communities of Faith United for Housing, and she sits on the board of the Northern Virginia Affordable Housing Alliance. And so, Shelley brings a wealth of experience, and I'm excited to get to work with her on the project we're doing right now in McLean that will open this fall.
That's right.
So, excellent. So, thank you all again for joining us, and we'll start off just by getting an overview, as I mentioned, from Ms. Gilloran, about what's happening here in Herndon.
Thank you Chair Jonas. This evening, we are looking at housing diversity and understanding that and what it means in Herndon, and that is really viewing the housing supply through a lens focused on the ranges of price and age-appropriateness housing that's available to the community. Just to orient everyone, Herndon is approximately 4.2 square miles, located at the western edge of Fairfax County next to Dulles Airport, and will be shortly providing rail service both out into Loudoun County as well as into Tyson's and DC through the Silverline Station, which will be in fact in Herndon. Looking at a map of Herndon, you can see the red line outlines the actual boundary of the town, southern edges along the Dulles Toll Road. You can see that we will be having the advantage of actually three Silverline stations. The Reston Town Center Station does overlap this, it's the one-mile radius, it overlaps into the town. The Herndon Station, of course, overlaps into the town, and then the Innovation Station, located just to the west of the town, also the one-mile radius reaches into the southern portion of the town. So, we definitely are going to be having both the very positive, wonderful impacts of the metro, as well as undoubtedly some more pressure on our housing due to the arrival of mass transit. So, as of January 1st, 2018, within the town of Herndon, there were 7,974 total housing units. 3,029 of those were single-family detached units, 2,433 were single-family attached or townhouse units, 2,512 were the multifamily units, and that includes both condominiums as well as rental units. So, when did this housing appear in Herndon? It's very interesting. Actually, 51.5% of the housing that exists today in Herndon was built before 1980. 41.2% dates to the 1970s, and that equates to 3,259 of the town's 7,974 units, and this is the largest single decade of residential growth within the town. I should also point out that this is also a decade, you may have seen recent articles concerning where in some cases the construction quality of the housing built during the 70s and even into the 80s is not of perhaps the finest quality, and we are discovering that at this time. 19.3% of the housing stock dates to the 1980s, 18.7% to the 1990s, 8.7%. You see, we've definitely had a downturn in units as the town has filled out, and we don't have as much growth currently. 8.7% dates to the 2000s, and then in the last seven years, we've only seen an increase, a minor increase, it's 1.8% of the existing housing dates from 2010 to today. Now, if we look at the rental inventory as of January of this year, we have a total of 1,750 rental units, and these are multifamily rental and one development of townhouse-style rental units. Again, if you look at the dates that follow each of these development names, you can see that our multifamily housing stock is definitely aging for the most part. You see several 1970-era developments, we even have some going back into the 60s, Park Ridge Garden Apartments, the majority of that was built in 1964, although there was a small addition built in 1989. And then the Westerly at World Gate was 1995, and the Towns at Herndon Center was in 2001. Now, from city data, these are figures from 2016. The estimated median household income in the town was 105,469. The estimated median house or condo value in that year was 429,993. Mean prices, all housing units, 475,534. Detached housing being at 572,300. Townhouses and other attached units, those are in the 350,000 range, and five or more unit structures, so your multifamily development primarily is in the 232,672. Now, Fairfax County data, average sale price at April 2018, detached houses were 746,782, while attached were in the $391,000 range. So, what's going on in Herndon today with pricing? So, we looked at a snapshot here, and this is August 31st of 2018. The first thing you notice is we don't have a lot of units on the market at this point. For single-family detached homes, as of August 31st, we had 20 resales on the market, we had 10 new construction, single-family detached homes on the market. Resale, your average asking price was about 576,300. Your lowest was 439,000, your highest was 760,000. You look at new construction, and you don't see a particularly large range, 10, approximately 10 houses on the market, average asking 858,000, the lowest is 850,000, the highest was 899,000. So you can see it's very condensed in the 800s, up into the 900s actually, once you look at the actual sales prices. Townhouses, again, limited sales inventory out there, six resale, average asking price was 343,833. The lowest was 290,000, the highest was 550,000. For new construction, we had five on the market, and the lowest is 689,000, the highest being 839,000. For resale, condo resale, we had three, only three on the market, and that was an average asking price of 259,000, lowest at 189,000, and the highest at 265,000. Now, we do have new construction condominiums for sale. There are two over two, some people consider them townhouses, they're basically two stories each, one on top of the other, and there were 64 of those in the original approved site plan. It's my understanding they've actually sold about 50% of those units at this time, and the average asking price is 565,000, the lowest is 520,000, the highest is $620,000. Now, the majority of this information came from the Zillow website. So, what's going on with the rental market? On August 31st, when we looked at it, the market rate apartments, one bedrooms, we had 349 units, the square footage was 698 square feet for the average, and the average rent is 1,528. For the two bedrooms, the total number of units, and these are not available units, but units in existence, was 662. Average square feet, 846 square feet, your average rent there is 1,776,000. For your three-bedroom units, there are 205 in town, and the average rent is 2,318. So the total units reported was 1,000 of those 26 vacancies. So again, a lot of pressure there, not a lot of vacancies. Now, we do have a moderate-income apartment development, it's age-restricted in town, it is the Herndon Harbor House. It has 120 units, they're approximately 560 square feet, and they're currently leasing for 1,000, the average rent is $1,023. As I mentioned before, we do have one townhouse-style rental community, it's Towns at Herndon Center, they're two- and three-bedrooms, they don't have any one-bedrooms, they're 218 units, the average square footage is 1,360, and the average rent is $2,450, and they had four vacancies at the end of August. And that sums up the material for the background on what we have in town existing and what the current conditions are. And with that, I'll hand it back to Chair Jonas.
Thank you Ms. Gilloran. And just before you step away, did the commissioners have any questions for Ms. Gilloran regarding the presentation? Nope. All right, you're free. All right. Well, we're going to move on to the panel for some feedback and your presentation, and Mr. Fleetwood, I was going to start with you. Are you, Ms. Gilloran, do we want to move the slides for him? Would that be?
I might be able to, I can do it from here.
You're good? All right, good deal. Magic.
So, first of all, Commissioner Jonas, thank you very much to you and to the entire planning commission for this opportunity. I'm always really grateful and happy to be here in the town of Herndon, and I'll say that having grown up in Falls Church, I was a frequent visitor to the town and always loved coming here, and I'm sure like many of you, I continue to lament the demise of the tortilla factory, I just want to put that out there. So, tonight, you know, I really had wanted to address, you know, how, what is diverse affordable housing, and what does that mean? And I'd like to talk a little bit about that, and then talk about the partnership that we do have already with the town of Herndon between the county and the town. So, and it seems like one of my slides got lopped off, so I'm going to read from this, but just so that we're all together in terms of a premise, affordable housing generally means housing where folks aren't paying more than about a third of their income for rent and mortgage. And, you know, why is this important? Stable, affordable housing is critical for family stability, for health indicators, there's been a lot more work being done about the connection between stable, affordable housing and health outcomes, academic performance, in order to be able to perform academically, our students need a stable home to go home to, to do their homework, to study, et cetera, and employment, your ability to contribute to the local economy. And Fairfax County has really found that having a range of price and age-appropriate housing is essential to our economic success. So let's talk a little bit about our partnership with the town of Herndon. The FCRHA, the Fairfax County Redevelopment Housing Authority, owns and operates a range of housing across the county, including here in the town of Herndon, most notably, as has been cited, Herndon Harbor House, of which we're very, very proud. The FCRHA also operates the Housing Choice voucher program throughout the county, including here in Herndon, which is the federal rent subsidy program. And we have a shared mission, again, to preserve, protect, and to produce a diverse range of price and age-appropriate housing. So let's talk a little bit about housing affordability and economic competitiveness. We have found, both through the work that we've done on our housing strategic plan and the county's plan for economic success, that housing affordability contributes directly to our economic competitiveness. It helps people both live and work, it helps people live near where they work and not have long commutes and burden our already strained transportation system. It makes it easier for our businesses to attract and retain workers, this is critically important. It reduces income segregation, so we have more diversity throughout our community, and it broadens the county's tax base. So what does diverse affordable housing look like in Fairfax County? I'll just give a few examples here. This is Coppermine, which is a project by Wesley Housing, one of our terrific partners. Coppermine includes two segments, one for seniors and the other for people with disabilities, and this was a result of a partnership between Wesley Housing and the Fairfax County Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Sunrise Square, this is a new one, these are for-sale workforce housing units that are located in Reston that are actively for sale right now. Crescent Apartments, many of you are probably familiar with this one, this is located adjacent to Lake Anne Village Center, the housing, the Board of Supervisors, pardon me, acquired this one in 2006 and continues to operate it as affordable housing. And we also have affordable and workforce dwelling units that have been provided under our inclusionary land use tools throughout areas like Maryfield and Tyson's Corner and our other high-density, high-employment areas. So I'm going to ask my colleague Ms. Bailey to talk a little bit about the legal environment under which we operate.
Great, so thank you, and I'd like to reiterate Tom's comments in terms of how happy I am to be here this evening, a chance to meet all of you, and is it not on?
Is it on now? There we go, that makes a big difference. Again, I'm Cynthia Bailey, I'm very happy to be here tonight and have this opportunity to work with all of you. I'm going to touch a little bit on the legal environment, mainly because it's so critical to any type of diverse housing initiatives that a locality attempts. And the reason for that keeps me employed frankly, but there's just lots of legal pitfalls that are out there, and lots of things to be aware of. Tom has already touched a little bit on the existing relationship with the county and the town, Housing Choice voucher program, the CDBG program, home funds, and those are already operating pursuant to existing agreements. I think everyone who is at all involved in local government is very much aware of the Dillon Rule. Dillon is a concept which essentially provides that localities only have those powers expressly given to them. So, whenever you are initiating any kind of a project or effort, you've got to make sure that you have the requisite enabling authority. You have to make sure that you are in fact allowed to do what it is you set out to do. Fortunately, the FCRHA, which will serve hopefully as a partner, has a lot of enabling legislation with respect to this kind of work. You know, the FCRHA can incur debt, it can pass bonds, it can manage and operate housing. It's not clear that all localities have that same power. I can't speak for the town because I'm not a town attorney, I'm just a county attorney, but that's really the first place that you want to look, is to make sure that you have that enabling authority in order to do whatever it is that you set out to do. Once you've gotten over that hurdle, then there are some tools available to you, you know, the public-private partnerships, which is, I'm sorry, it's a mouthful, just the Public Private Educational Facilities and Infrastructure Act. Again, they make these labels long so that people like me stay employed, but, you know, it's something, it's a complicated statute that enables localities to effectuate projects in which you reach out to nonprofit partners, sort of like Wesley Housing that's here. Regardless of what it is that you do, if there's a way that you are looking to build something, obtain something, exchange services, procurement is going to be front and center. Localities are constrained by procurement laws, and, so again, that's an area that dictates, you know, what you can and can't do, and all of that is pursuant to particularized processes. When localities purchase land, when they sell land, there's particularized ways that it has to be done. So, there's a huge legal overlay to a lot of this kind and type of work. I actually know Lisa Yates, who's your town council, and she's wonderful, fully capable of guiding you all through this kind of a process. Another tool that's available, you know, is through your zoning ordinance, is again, assuming that there's the enabling legislation to craft an affordable dwelling unit program by which you ensure that developers essentially aren't incurring any additional cost, they're granted additional density in order to provide affordable housing units. And then finally, via the proffer policies or proffered conditions with respect to entitlement processes, in Fairfax County, we've developed workforce housing. Proffers you have to be careful about because of new proffer legislation that limits the type and kind of proffers that a locality can ask of a developer. But those are just, again, some of the tools that may be available to you all.
Thank you Cynthia. Shelley.
So, I'm here. Now it's on? There we go. So, I'm here tonight really representing those nasty developers. I am the sheep in wolf's clothing because Wesley Housing is a nonprofit developer of affordable housing. As Tom mentioned, we've got any number of projects that we've done and are doing in partnership with the county. And our footprint extends from Manassas to DC, so, but we are Fairfax County born and bred, so very happy to be here as a part of this discussion tonight. You know, as we look at the county environment and the environment in the town of Herndon, I guess what I want to say is developers are opportunistic, and they're going to look at the real estate within the quarter-mile and the half-mile of these three stations, and they're going to want to derive the most value that they can get out of the land that they acquire for development, regardless of what you all want for your community, because that's not their motivation. So for me, as we think about this discussion and we think about housing that's affordable for all, this is the perfect time for you all to think about what it is that you want. You know, I'm not sitting here to say that you have to have affordable housing, obviously you need some affordable housing, but there's, that's got to be a mix of the broader plans that you have, because what's going to happen is the development of the metro stations will drive up land prices, which means in order to do development, it's going to have to be higher cost and more dense, which means that people who are currently able to live here may not be able to afford to live here for the long term. And as Tom talked about, you know, the metro station becomes a real tool and fuel for economic development in the town of Herndon, but a lot of those jobs will be lower-rate wage jobs. You know, we all want the ability to walk down the street to that nice restaurant or shop in that cute little shop, and those jobs are quite low income. So if those people get to live where they work, then you're going to need a range of housing types that serves those folks who are disabled, fixed income, low income, up to those who are the executives running all the data centers that are located just outside the town, right? This being the data center capital of the free world these days, from what I heard this week. So, you know, we can talk about affordable housing and what it is and what it isn't, and how it works and how it doesn't, but most importantly, this is the perfect time for you all to think about what you want as a community, what range of housing you think you need, and what types of housing you think you need, and to get in front of that freight train that is coming, which are developers like me and others who are going to buy up property and build what we want to build absent any direction from you.
Awesome. Thank you Shelley. Any further comments from the panel, last thoughts before we open it up to dialogue?
We had had a few additional slides relative to possible solutions we might look at.
Awesome. Do they not pop up, or are you?
No, they're right here.
All right, perfect.
Okay. So we had wanted to, you know, raise thoughts about three possible paths forward in terms of opportunities to, you know, to address the challenge that we have together. Cynthia talked about public-private partnerships, and we really view this as the future Cynthia talked about public-private partnerships, and we really view this as the future of affordable housing in terms of how to use land, particularly publicly-owned land, to create additional affordable housing opportunities. We've had a highly successful model in Fairfax County that might be, provide opportunities here in the town as well. I'll give a few quick examples. The residences at the Government Center, which is on the campus of the Fairfax County Government Center, is 270 units, affordable to people earning up to 60% of the area median income. This was built by a private developer using low-income housing tax credits at no cost to the local taxpayer. Next one may look familiar to Shelley. This is Wesley's project at Lewinsville. This is a new senior housing development in McLean, also being done under the Public Private Partnership Act. And North Hill, this is the redevelopment of a long vacant parcel on the Richmond Highway corridor into a diverse range of both senior and workforce housing, multifamily, and ownership housing as well. So a total of 279 affordable homes and about 175 for-sale townhomes at market rate. And finally, One University. This is the FCRHA's former headquarters facility, which is located adjacent to George Mason University on University Drive, where it's been proposed, and we are in the process of going through a partnership to develop approximately 600 beds of student housing plus 240 units of affordable and senior housing on the site of our former headquarters building and a former public housing community. Affordable Housing Financing, again, we talked about the Housing Authority as the local housing finance agency. The FCRHA has issued over half a billion dollars in bonds in support of affordable housing projects over the years, and we've been highly successful in working with developers like Wesley Housing and others to provide, to get local and federal resources into these projects. Just a few examples. This is Lindsey Hill. This is the redevelopment of former prison buildings down at Lorton for senior housing. Interesting note about that one is that the developers were wondering why the original windows were so high off the ground. Can't imagine why. Next, Huntington Gardens. This is an acquisition by Christian Relief Services in near the Richmond Highway corridor. This is 118 units of affordable housing, including 28 units for people with disabilities. This is North Point, which is owned and operated by Cornerstones. And coming soon, the Wesley Project at Huntington, known as the Arden, and this one's located, again, adjacent to the Huntington Metro Station in South County. Then finally, our inclusionary land use tools. I'd like to, you know, highlight how productive our affordable dwelling unit program has been over the years, almost 2,800 units developed in total. This is provided for under our zoning ordinance, so it's a requirement. We also have our workforce dwelling unit policy, which Cynthia mentioned. We have approximately 8,400 units in the development pipeline under our workforce dwelling unit policy, and we've had over 1,200 delivered, many of which are in Tyson's and Maryfield. This is a proffer-based incentive system that's provided for in the county's comprehensive plan, and it has, you know, it has begun to experience some challenges in the environment that we have with the current proffer legislation. Nonetheless, it's been and continues to be highly productive for us. And just a montage of some of the types of buildings where we have some of our workforce housing units. These are privately-owned and operated rental units. These are not publicly owned, and they're affordable to a range of incomes between 70 and 120% of the area median income. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the commission. Thank you for putting a lot of thoughts in our head. I've seen some mad note-taking going on, including myself along the way, and so I'll look to one of you to go first. Tom?
No, I appreciate the ability to go first because I'm going to follow on the last three words that you said. That was average median income, I think. If you don't mind, without getting too detailed into the numbers, can you talk about what is the average median income, say, in Fairfax County? When you talk, then when you talk about affordable housing, are you generally looking at 50% of AMI, 80%? You know, what, talk a little bit about that. And then, I don't know how quickly you could do the math in your head, but if we hear that multi-unit, a unit in a multi-unit building averages $232,000 in Herndon, I'm just curious, like, is that already affordable? Is that ridiculously unaffordable? So start with AMI and then percentages of AMI that you tend to target, and then maybe we'll take it from there.
Sure. The area median income in Fairfax County is approximately $110,000 a year for a family of four. So, you know, the smaller a family is, we adjust the, you know, we adjust that downward, the larger, you know, we adjust it upwards. Generally speaking, the Housing Authority will finance projects that serve a range of incomes up to about 80% of area median income, but the vast majority of what, you know, of what we finance serves up to 60% of area median income, and that's consistent with the major financing tools that are available to us through the state, including, most importantly, the low-income housing tax credit program. Taking a step back, though, just to give you an idea of, you know, of who it is that the Housing Authority is serving in its programs, and this is, you know, this is also consistent with the great work that our nonprofit and for-profit affordable housing development partners are doing, but in our programs, the average income that we're serving is about $23,000 a year across all of our programs. So that's what HUD calls an extremely low income. And but for that support that they get from these programs, you know, through the housing and the rental vouchers, et cetera, people wouldn't be able to live here in Fairfax County, or they would be pursuing market-driven solutions like overcrowding, for example.
Okay, next, thank you.
Thank you all for being here tonight. This is a very informative dialogue. I had a question about kind of the multifaceted approach to affordable housing, certainly the three different options that you presented as potential solutions are getting at that approach, but I kind of want to dig a little deeper into that and ask, do you have a certain idea of the percentage that is used for the public-private partnerships that you use in relation to federal tax credits versus the bond authority that you have at the authority, as well as any sort of trust fund that exists within the county, and how those all play into the different projects and how you finance those projects?
Sure. I can, I'll talk about that from a broad perspective, and perhaps Shelley might want to jump in and speak to it from a practitioner's standpoint. What I can tell you is that the, is that most affordable housing projects require a combination of just about all of these resources. You know, our local fund typically is used to fund, you know, any gap that exists between the rental income of the property and its ability to sustain debt, and I don't want to go too far in the weeds there. But local, you know, our local housing funding in Fairfax County does have a housing trust fund called the Penny for Affordable Housing Fund. It's capitalized about $12 million a year right now. The low-income housing tax credits, there are two different flavors of them. The 4% tax credits are non-competitive, so essentially, you know, a developer can, you know, can go to the HDA and get those to support their projects, but they are not as lucrative in terms of the amount of private capital that they attract to the project. The 9% tax credits, of which there's a very limited allocation, are extremely competitive, and that's administered by the Virginia Housing Development Authority. So that's essentially the statewide equivalent to the Fairfax County Redevelopment and Housing Authority. We also, you know, we also have a, you know, we're very lucky to have federal resources in the form of home and community development block grant resources. Because of the strings that come with those, those are often less attractive for multifamily development, but they are very attractive for our nonprofit partners who are purchasing individual units, particularly those that are serving people with extremely low incomes where the units can't, you know, can't really support much in the way of debt service. So it's really a combination of all of the above to be able to make, you know, projects like what you've seen today happen. Shelley, do you want to?
Yeah, so, you know, if you, if you think about how a project works, if you're, if you're building, a building that's dedicated or primarily affordable housing, and as Tom said, while the legal measurement might be 80% and below, because low-income housing tax credits really only fund at the 60% and below, we're really talking about topping out at, let's say, $64,000 for a family of four. So these are working folks, but they just don't make a lot of money, right? So it is a combination, just like when you buy your own home, of mortgage and equity. But for us, particularly as nonprofits, we lean into the tax credits to provide the equity piece. And because we're restricting the rents to below market, there's never quite enough debt that we can put on the property to still make it perform the way it needs to, and so that we can have enough money to reinvest and continue to maintain it good quality. So then we come to our partners and get a soft second mortgage, if you will, that is payable out of, you know, if there's money to pay it. If not, it doesn't get paid, thank you. That we come to our partners with Fairfax County to provide that gap financing. There's other things that get layered in depending upon the type of project. We also, you know, Fairfax County is one of the best-run housing authorities that you will find anywhere, and the staff there does a really good job of managing the very limited supply of housing vouchers, which says one of the things that helps us be more competitive is the fact that we can work with Tom and his team to get vouchers that help to reduce the rent for those folks at extremely low income. So for Wesley Housing, when we do a project, we usually figure that 10% of that project will be a combination of special needs and extremely low income, you know, below 30%, often below 15% of the area median income. Does that?
Oh, yeah, no, it's very helpful. I'm just trying to get an idea of what other jurisdictions are doing and how those figures play into the mix, and I'm curious to know your thoughts, if you do have any knowledge of Arlington and Loudoun County, how their operation runs from that perspective, not necessarily the inclusionary zoning aspect, but really from the federal-state housing perspective, and what kind of funds they have within the county as well.
So the recipe is the same. You know, again, we work across multiple jurisdictions, so that, the financing stack, if you will, is quite similar. And because of the land costs here, we're really talking primarily 9% tax credits. There's very limited opportunities to use 4% tax credits, and it's mostly if you're renovating something that you already own, or if you happen to be in, let's just call it a disadvantaged zone, where you can get a basis boost for those. So it really works the same way, and really, to be competitive, it means that the locality needs to put in about 20% of the value in order to maximize your ability to compete for the credits. So that's why it kind of looks the same. Each jurisdiction runs its housing program differently. So, for example, City of Alexandria, they don't have a housing authority, they do have a housing authority, but their housing authority doesn't have a lot of spare vouchers. So they have started doing local housing subsidy that can help take the place of that. They fund about one project a year, and they sort of look out, and so we line up. It's kind of like landing at Dulles, where you see the planes lined up to land. So we get in queue and work with the county in terms of, or work with the city in terms of what they're going to have for resources, and they will use a combination of their housing trust funds, annual appropriated funds, and sometimes they'll use their bonding capacity for projects as well. Arlington has been known historically as having the most local money. They are having their own challenges right now, as they are facing other, you know, issues that they are trying to balance. So, you know, I would say that their ability to fund locally is, it's greater than Fairfax County, but it is not at the level that it used to be, and costs there are extraordinarily high. The closer that you get into DC, the higher your costs go. Land costs go up and development costs go up. Loudoun has a housing trust fund that they have put out the very first solicitation on, and, you know, we're very excited to see how that goes. Some of the restrictions on that make it a little bit harder to use. This is their first time out of the chute. So, you know, I think that they've got $27, $28 million, and they don't have a real ready path to replenish that, but they've certainly got some to work with right now.
And would you see a difference between the size of jurisdiction that Herndon is, a little over 25,000 residents, versus Fairfax County, 1.1-plus million people? I mean, how does the county and state, or how do the federal and state programs for financing look at that? Is that a factor that's considered, or is it purely, do you have a good program that we, that we can fund?
You know.
Shelley, I'm going to piggyback off of what you said and just sort of to open this up a little further. It's, you know, how are similar-sized jurisdictions within the county or in the region, cities or towns? Have you had conversations or examples that you can share about people that are a little more like us?
Okay.
So the City of Fairfax and the City of Falls Church, you know, both are separate jurisdictions from the county, you know, whereas the town of Herndon has the, you know, is also a part of Fairfax County. So we're able to, you know, the resources that Fairfax County has can also be brought to bear within the town. That's not the case in the cities of Fairfax and Falls Church. And we have been, you know, engaged over the last several months in working with the City of Fairfax, in assisting them in sorting out, you know, some of these issues, including their inclusionary zoning, you know, you know, possible path forward on inclusionary zoning. We administer the Housing Choice Voucher Program in the city. The city is what we call a participating jurisdiction with us for the purpose of community development block grant and home funding. The City of Falls Church also has a huge challenge with housing affordability. I think, I think they are the single highest-cost jurisdiction in northern Virginia at this point, and they're a participating jurisdiction with us in the Housing Choice Voucher Program, so we administer that, you know, within their jurisdiction, but they're a participating jurisdiction for CDBG and home with Arlington County.
I would say I don't believe at all that the tax credit competition hinges on the jurisdiction. It really hinges on the merit of the project.
Of the deal.
Yes, absolutely.
And so in that regard, I think you're fine. You know, to underscore what Tom has said, you know, at least in Fairfax County, one of the, truly, the most effective tools that we've had is our zoning ordinance and, you know, the workforce dwelling unit policy, which is a proffer incentive-based policy.
Tom?
I think this question is just to kind of clarify or pull together a couple of things that I'm hearing. It sounds like, I'm going to try to ask this in a simple way and ask for a simple answer. It sounds like there's maybe three major tools that a jurisdiction might have to encourage this type of development. One is zoning that encourages it one way or another, and maybe it's stents or benefits. Two is some kind of a housing fund that contributes to the financing stack, the developer's financing stack, to plug the gap needed. And then three, through the federal government and have you, access to tax credit programs or other sort of outside money that comes outside of it. Is there, is there another piece of that puzzle that I'm missing? A major piece of the puzzle that I'm missing? A major piece of the puzzle that I'm missing?
I think if you're going to look broadly at best practices, you've hit on some of them. I often hit hard on the zoning pieces because if you're going to build a range of housing, a lot of that housing will be mixed income, and you can use that trade-off between developers wanting additional density to say, with that comes the requirement for more levels of affordability as part of what you're doing. And that means that the development itself bears the cost of that, and it doesn't take the incremental funding sources that we've been talking about. So I think that's a powerful tool. And while there are some county-wide policies, there are also some jurisdictions like Tyson's and Maryfield that have decided to set levels above that, and they've tweaked the affordability levels a little bit to, again, do what they felt was right for their community, which is why I kind of started with that. There's other tools available. There are impact fees, where when developers come in for commercial development, which you will see pressure for as part of this, in some jurisdictions, in all the jurisdictions adjacent, there are commercial impact fees that a developer will pay in order to develop. And that money can be used then to fund affordable housing or other things. And there's other esoteric tools, tax increment financing. There's a whole suite of tools that can be used. So part of it comes down to what authority does the town have, what authority can it lean into as part of Fairfax County, and then how can you define that?
I would say one of the advantages of the PPA, or the Public Private Infrastructure Act, is that it allows jurisdictions to initiate a competitive process. What you'll find with respect to many of these projects is it requires an enormous amount of creativity. I mean, when you say, "Think outside the box," like on steroids. For example, another tool that hasn't been mentioned this evening are historic tax credits, which were employed at the prison site to provide a little additional equity at that And the PPEA allows a locality to identify a particular site and to, for the most part, it's sites that the locality owns, that they want to leverage their existing land to help also plug that gap. If the land is free, that helps further the process a whole lot. But it bears upon, or it requires or asks for creative solutions from the private development community. And so a lot of times, through that process, you can solicit interesting, unique proposals that perhaps you wouldn't have otherwise thought of.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And thank you again for participating in tonight's panel and sharing your experience and knowledge. I'm curious as to what and how extensive the long-term responsibilities of managing or assistant in managing these programs after the project is complete, and what responsibilities are shared, or how much effort? And also, the capabilities of dictating what transpires in the future.
So I'll respond to that from the public sector side and ask Shelley to respond to that from the practitioner side. There are a variety of tools by which you lay out the requirements for a project that receives financing or uses public land. The loan documents, if you're putting financing into a project, your loan documents can spell out the requirements for affordability. In some cases, you'll have affordability spelled out in the proffers that are recorded, like in a redevelopment. You will also, there will also be the conditions that are required in terms of the use of tax credits, but largely, it's driven by the financing that's being used. So that's sort of the environment. In terms of, forgive me.
No, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Tom, I just wanted to dovetail on that point in terms of the financing, because the ongoing management and operational costs are included within those calculations. So right at the beginning of the projects, they're anticipating what ongoing management and operation costs will be, and that becomes a component of the planning for the project. So it's not as though it's just built and then people walk away.
So typically, when the housing authority makes a loan to a project, there'll be monitoring fees that we charge, and then we, as staff, monitor compliance with the terms of the loan that we put into a project. And generally speaking, our affordability requirements are 30 years, and that's consistent with the low-income housing tax credit program. And VHDA also has a monitoring regime on top of it as well. So that's kind of writ large, how we make sure that folks do what they say they're going to do with these resources.
Yes, so from a practitioner standpoint, we develop the project, and then we own it for the long term. The tax credit compliance period is 15 years. Most jurisdictions now have at least a 30-year compliance, extended compliance period for affordability, because 15 years goes by like that. In Arlington, it's 60 years or longer. So once we develop a project and it is leased up and it goes into service, we are monitored all the way through the various compliance periods by the first mortgage holder, by the second mortgage holder, by the VHDA, by the investor who bought the tax credits, and by anybody else who's involved in the financing stack for that project. So there's, for us, we have, as we said, all the costs for managing the project for the long term and making sure that we're remaining compliant and that it's staying in good condition are built into the baseline budget. So when we go in to try to get financing for a project, we not only have to get approval for the money to build the project, but that project is evaluated based on at least a 15-year cash flow. It says it has to meet debt service coverage requirements, it has to be able to do that at the income levels that are committed to, so it has to be compliant for at least that 15-year commitment, and you have to show that in your financials in order to get the financing.
Thank you.
I'm going to circle us just a little bit here. This is a huge education for, I think, probably everybody sitting up here, and I know everybody appreciates it. I want to talk just a little bit. One of the things that I think was clear on the map that Ms. Gilrun presented is how much we're going to be impacted by the changes that come with the silver line and growth and this technology corridor that we live along. And so how do we, what would be your suggestions to the town on how we work on neighborhood preservation as we move forward? Are there some things that you would advise us from your seat in the theater?
Some initial thoughts come to mind. First of all, you have a lot of really old housing stock that's going to have to be replaced one way or another. I was sort of sitting here doing the math, and only 10% of your housing stock has been built in the last 30 years, and only 30% of your rental stock has been built in the last 25 years. So no matter what happens, as this development pressure comes, you have an opportunity to replace what you have with better-quality housing in many cases. How do you preserve it? I'm going to look to the City of Alexandria, perhaps, as an example. They went to VHDA and got a capacity-building grant that they are using to go through a planning process with the community at what they call the southern end of Route 1, which, for those of us who are Fairfax County-based, is the very northern part of Route 1, just across the border in Alexandria. And they have spent a lot of time having community meetings, table talks, really talking through what the possibilities are with the community. They have two or three large redevelopment projects going on there. If you look at what's happened along Route 1, it's kind of the example of maybe whatnot to do. You've got all of this development that has occurred in Huntington, which really, you've got a fair amount of market-affordable housing and market-affordable homeownership housing stock that is aging and is facing severe development pressure. So then, as you look north, there's a whole bunch of larger apartments and condos there where developers were coming in and wanting to redevelop at incredibly higher density. So the city has been working with them through this listening process with the community to make sure that as part of this, they've said, "Well, of this, we're going to preserve this many units at this affordability level, and in exchange for that, then we'll let this density go forward." And so they've been working this through together with the development community and the people who live there. And they did this, again, they went to VHDA and got a capacity-building grant that helped to fund the resources necessary to do that. They faced a similar challenge a few years ago when JBG came in and was going to redevelop the Beauregard neighborhood, and they actually, at that point, went out and did a survey of the people who lived there so that they could understand what the impact would be of the changes that were being proposed with the higher-density housing. And then that allowed them to put some plans in place to say, "Well, we can't preserve all the market-affordable housing here, but we can preserve these number of units, and we will commit to the funding in order to do that." So that's why I sort of started out by saying, "This is the time where you can invest in the community and get ahead of the freight train to really decide what kind of housing you need, and then the tools are there to figure it out." And the developers, they'll find a way to make it happen, because with the increasing value of the land, it will be worth their while to come and participate.
I would echo Shelley's comments that now's the time to try to capture this value as you prepare for the advent of the silver line here. I would also point to the work that's being done on the Richmond Highway Corridor here in Fairfax County related to the Embarck Bus Rapid Transit plans that have been put into place there. The Richmond Highway Corridor in southern Fairfax County has a significant amount of what we call market-affordable housing, and there is significant concern that the land use conditions that have been put in place there to help facilitate the bus rapid transit could lead to a loss of that market-affordable housing. So the board has asked certain members of the community, including Shelley, to come together and develop a set of recommendations related in particular to affordable housing preservation, the preservation of market-affordable housing, or if not preserving it, how do you replace it? So we are also actively going through a similar situation in the county right now.
I would say, if you haven't already done so, is to strictly analyze where you have additional proffer authority. You have proffer authority near mass transit areas or areas that have been, forgive me, I'm forgetting the exact term in the statute, but appropriately planned. You have additional tools if you have that proffer authority, and it generally tends to be around metro stations or areas where there's mass transit. Outside of those areas, the General Assembly recently took away significant authority of localities to develop and create affordable housing. And so if you're outside of those areas, then the tools that you're left with are your zoning tools, or of course, project development, as we've already been speaking about. But I would recommend that you have a very clear idea of what those boundaries are.
Thank you. Sean?
Thank you. On the subject of maintaining affordable housing stock, I've heard the word voucher used a couple of times, and it occurs to me that I'm not sure that I know what it means in this context. Would you mind saying what it means in this context?
Sure. A rental housing voucher is a rental subsidy that pays the difference between what a person can afford based on their income and the actual rent. And as practiced in the main here, it refers to the Federal Housing Choice voucher program, formerly called Section 8. Fairfax County also has a locally-funded rental subsidy program that serves, I think, currently, we have about 180 families in our local rental housing voucher program, and we have about 4,000 families in our federal housing choice voucher program.
And you probably don't know this, but some of those 100 or however many families might be living in the town of Herndon, right?
I am certain there are.
Okay. So, right, so that kind of, like, most of, a lot of what we've been talking about has been new construction and new development, and setting aside 10% of units and things like that. And that idea makes a lot of, I understand how that can work. If the market goes flat and you're not building a lot of units, it's not doing you a whole lot of good, right? So it sounds like then, like, when I was trying to talk about what's the list of tools, the tools we talked about before were the ones for new construction, but it sounds like the federal vouchers or even the county voucher program are tools that can help people in existing housing stock.
That's correct. And typically, those resources serve people who have extremely low incomes. The average income in the Housing Choice voucher program in Fairfax County is roughly $20,000 a year for the families that we serve.
And part of the reason I ask is that when I look at our number of units on the market, you know, 30 single-family homes, 11 townhouses, 67 condos, 10% of the total of that number is just not a whole lot of units that you're talking about. And even in small towns like Herndon, it's sort of a drop in the bucket. It's a nice place to start, but it does make me think about what to do for the people that are here now and for the housing that we have right now.
Kind of give you an idea of the scope of the challenge that we have right now.
Please do.
The affordable rental housing gap that we have in Fairfax County includes the town of Herndon, it's about 31,000 units right now. So that's, 31, we're missing, or we're in need of, about 31,000 rental units affordable to people earning up to 80% of the area median income. And in the main, what that means is that these are people who are already here but can't afford the housing that they have.
And to piggyback then, and some of those people are choosing to stay here and live in overcrowded situations or partial homelessness, or who knows what.
Or most likely to be cost-burdened.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so there are some statistics about the number of households that are cost-burdened in our area, and it's fairly high. Folks who are paying as much as 50% or more of their income just to cover their housing costs. And so, you're right, if you don't have sufficient housing that's affordable at the various income levels needed in the community, then you're either going to have folks who are very cost-burdened, or you're going to have overcrowding, both of which are certainly not good for the community. And one of the things that really jumped out at me when I was looking at the initial presentation is of the, you know, 1,000 and some-odd market-rate apartments, there's only 26 vacancies, which says, I mean, you have no vacancies, and you clearly have insufficient demand for rental housing, and you have old stock. So I look at this, again, I've got my developer's hat on, right, and I see a tremendous opportunity because if you look at those big circles where the silver line is coming, and you talk about that combination of the tools that are available because proper legislation still allows you to be more creative in your use of tools inside of those circles, you 've got the ability to replace some of that housing stock with newer, better condition, and add density at a variety of income levels that will meet the needs of the community.
Just to dovetail a little bit on Shelley's point about how folks are cost-burdened, when you when you remove that cost burden, that provides additional disposable income for those families, which has a generating fact in terms of economic development, because then they have those dollars to continue to spend within your community. So in that regard, it can really be a win-win.
And in terms of health impacts and all of the other positive benefits that we discussed, you know, when someone has to pay more than half their income on rent, they're making choices, you know, about which medication to buy, or whether to buy that medication, or how, you know, what food they can buy, if they can buy food. So there are all kinds of knock-on effects to family success that are driven, you know, that are absolutely driven by the availability of affordable housing. I mean, housing truly is first in terms of priorities relative to success.
One thing I think we also think about as we look at demographic trends in Fairfax County, we are getting ready to experience and continue to experience a reversal where we have a much greater aging population who want to age in place. This is their home, this is their community, and they're going to face challenges of affordability. Does anyone have any thoughts on how we, that's another part of housing diversity. You know, obviously, Lewinsville is an example. Are you seeing other creative ways for us to think about that?
I'll just take a shot at that. You know, we have very deliberately in our public-private partnerships worked to include a senior element in many of the projects that we now have in our development pipeline. I mentioned our North Hill project is going to have a total of 279 units of affordable housing. That's going to include 60 units of new senior housing. The One University project is going to have about 240 units of affordable housing inclusive, or think we're anticipating of around 100 new units of affordable senior housing. So this idea of creating, you know, not just mixed-income affordable communities, but mixed-income, mixed-generation housing, we think builds strong communities and really provides opportunities for people who have raised their children here and who have had their careers here to be able to stay and continue to contribute in our community.
Shelley?
Well, there are, the, I'm going to get the name wrong, I want to say 50-over-50 Commission, and that's not right.
Fifty-plus.
Fifty-plus. The, you know, Fairfax 50-plus study is a good one to take a look at, because it outlines a whole series of tools and initiatives that communities can use to assist as the populations age, for folks to be able to remain in place, either in their own homes or cohoused, or, as Tom talked about, you know, we are seeing a tremendous uptick in the number of projects that we're working on that are for seniors. You know, we keep talking about the Fallstead at Lewinsville, which will have its grand opening in October, next month now. But, you know, we're seeing a big uptick in the number of senior properties that we're doing, but there's also other tools available for the community at large, for people who want to stay in their own home or who want to, you know, live with their children, you know, resources that are available through the county.
I would also just comment with respect to aging. Aside from looking at affordability solutions, there are times as well when it's appropriate to look at zoning-type of solutions. So continuing care communities are something that should be, you know, looked at from a zoning perspective to ensure that folks can, in fact, you know, truly age in place so that when medical care is required from a zoning perspective, those services can still be delivered at that location.
Any other questions from the commissioners? I think we're done. Any last thoughts, or you guys, did we wear you out?
Thank you very much for this opportunity. Really, really appreciated being able to come here and have this discussion, and looking forward to, you know, continuing and broadening our partnership.
Good luck.
Thank you.
It's an exciting time for you all. I mean, really, this is, this is an opportunity to really design the community that you want for the future, and I think that hopefully you're all excited and enthusiastic about what that might mean.
We really can't thank you guys enough for being here this evening, to be able to have the time to do a work session like this where we can have a dialogue with experts in a field that we want to understand more, is really a unique opportunity. So thank you for missing back-to-school nights and everything else that you did to get here on time. In terms of our next steps, just to sort of let you know, we will, as I mentioned in the beginning, hopefully we'll get some public comment at our meeting on Monday and some feedback, and then we will, in some of our upcoming work sessions, consider what we heard this evening and look at a path forward and be able to recommend some ideas to the town council to then follow up on. So you've helped us shape our journey, and we can't thank you enough for that. And Ms. Gilrin, we have a few little thank you.
Oh, goodness.
Few little town party guests.
As long as I don't have to declare it on my conflict of interest form, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out. We hope you're here for you as a media partner.
Oh, my goodness, thank you for including me.
Media adjourned at 8:17.